Okay, I think we have everybody here. All right, is everybody ready? All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the meeting of the Newburyport School Committee for February 23rd, 2021. Mrs. Kennedy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Hawkeiser.
Here.
Mayor Holliday.
Present.
Bruce Menon. Mr. Menon.
Here.
Mr. Duck. Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Redden.
Here.
Mr. Cole. Steve, is Mr. Cole there?
Yeah, you're muted, Steve.
Steve?
Here.
There you go.
Sorry.
Okay.
Ms. Spalding.
Here.
Okay, we have everyone present. And since I do not see a flag in any of our... Oh, there it is. Okay, we can stand in a pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. And I guess we're turning this over to Mr. Gallagher for this first presentation.
Yes. You're muted, Sean.
You're on mute, Sean. I'm not going to miss these days. I have to be honest.
It's only been a year.
It's only been a year, you know? The... Yeah, I think Nancy Lyxick's trying to come on in too, so I'll send her the link.
Okay, if I see her, I'll let her in.
Or yeah, if you maybe could send her an email with the link, we can let her in. And I know, I believe, Mr. Callahan, we have Doreen Crowe and Kathy Hacey out there too, right?
Yep, and they should both be in here with us.
Perfect.
Yep.
So before I turn it over to them, as they can do the official presentation, I just wanted to say a few words. This is a staff recognition. Kathy Ricchio was nominated and received the Massachusetts Nurse of the Year. And we're extremely proud of her and thankful of her efforts. And, you know, part of my write-up, I'd just like to read just a few things about Kathy Ricchio. As you all know, this is, this year has been no like any other year in Massachusetts, you know, with a pandemic. And because of the knowledge and leadership skills of our nurse leader Kathy Ricchio, we've been able to safely bring staff and students back for in-person learning. Kathy Ricchio's opinion of public health, public education, and the people have allowed us to build local protocols that are practical and sustainable. Whether meeting with the mayor or providing a workshop to staff or leading senior-level administrators in meetings, she is at heart a nurse who models caring and leadership. She commands a strong public presence in our community. Using her skills in public health, she gently educates and compassionately listens to all views. Kathy's been a rock for the Newburyport Public Schools as we've navigated all of the uncertainties during this pandemic. The MSNO has named Kathy as School Nurse Administrator of the Year, but to us, she is a true hero. So with that being said, I would like to turn over the award ceremony to Doreen Crowe and Ms. Kathy Hacey.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Good evening, everyone. So my name is Doreen Crowe and the president of the Massachusetts School Nurse Organization. It gives me great pleasure to be here tonight to recognize our esteemed colleague Kathy Hacey... I'm sorry, Kathy Ricchio for this prestigious award. And now I will turn it over to Kathy Hacey, our scholarship and awards chair, to make the presentation.
Thank you, Doreen. And school committee, thank you so much for giving us some time here for your school committee meeting. I know how busy you are. We just usually come in person, which is more fun. We usually actually have a plaque to hand Kathy. She'll get it in the mail. And flowers will have to get to her when COVID's done and we get to see her. Kathy Ricchio was one of several nominees for this year's School Nurse Administrator of the Year Award. There's several criteria, and these are evaluated by our awards committee. Sean actually just read a little bit of one thing I was going to say. But what was sent in for her nomination, one of the middle school principals said, "I spent this summer planning for new public health protocols, learning about a virus, creating a whole new set of operations to safely open my school building. And Kathy guided me and every other administrator in our district step by step through the process. And she provided us with resources, readings, professional development, so that our decisions were informed by current science and what was best for the children." Kathy does participate on a lot of things in our state and in your local community. She is on our Massachusetts School Nurse Organization Board. She's a member of NASN, the National Association of School Nurses, Sigma Theta Tau. She is on the Local Communitywide Food and Security Task Force and the Local Community Services Advisory Board, and a lot more, actually. Kathy's always there to help with legislative advocacy. And because of Kathy's grant writing, you have gotten some pretty significant grants for your district. She also promotes a great deal for her nurses and as far as continuing education and support for them. As Sean said, this has been a year like no other. We're all living through history, and you're very fortunate that you have Kathy Ricchio and her passion as your nurse leader in Newburyport. So Kathy, it gives me great pleasure to say that you have been awarded the Massachusetts School Nurse Administrator of the Year for 2021. Do you have anything to say, Kath?
Okay, okay, I guess, I guess I do get to say something right now. Well, I'm very humbled by this because everyone that's on this Zoom call, you know, I call and ask and get your advice and wonder what's going on and how should we move forward? And so this, to me, is really a team award. I have to honestly say, I feel that I'm part of the strongest nursing team I've ever had the privilege to work on right now. I learn, I think we all learn together. And this nursing team, I think the thing I'm most proud of is that they truly care about each other and ask me, well, gee, do you think they might need something down at the Brez? Or how's that high school doing up there? And for me, that just means everything, that they are thinking what they need for themselves to do the best they can, but they're always worried about their fellow nurses too. So I want to thank the nurses, because I wouldn't be getting this award if I didn't have such great nurses. Oh, dear. And then, you know, I have to also put a shout out to the people I went to Sweden with. And that is, was one of the most amazing experiences of my life, going to the International School Nursing Conference and presenting with a number of you on this Zoom call. And again, I've learned so much from you and everyone. And then I don't know if the, my, our former directors in DPH are on the Zoom call, but I will tell you, you can remember when I first got into school health and didn't know very much. And you helped guide me along that path. And I kind of took it on to learn myself too. But I asked you to be here because it meant so much to me in the very beginning, to get that guidance from DPH. So that's, that's about it. I'm very humbled by this, but it's also an honor, because I do consider this Massachusetts School Nursing Organization a very pivotal, important organization to enhance school health. And I'm lucky to work in this district. And thank you, family, for being with me. I better remember my family.
Excellent. Great. Congratulations, Nurse Ricchio. We're going to enter into public comment, and there seems to be well over 50 people attending. I'm going to ask that you do the raise your hand button there, so I can see that you want to talk. We will acknowledge you by name, hopefully pronounced correctly, and request that you keep your comment two minutes, and that you state your full name and address. So if everybody's ready, we're going to go. The first one, Ulrika Gerth, you are on.
Hi, so my name is Ulrika Gerth. I live at 24 Arlington Street. I have three kids in the school district, and I just want to make two points. First, I would like the district to present a clearly articulated plan, and I aim to bring all grades back to full-time in-person learning. We have learned a lot since last spring, and I think it needs to be reflected in your decisions. We have large peer-reviewed studies. We have real-world examples from across, you know, the country, Europe, and in Massachusetts that prove schools can successfully open. We have vaccinations have started, or risk groups, and cases are falling. And all of this should impact the amount of in-person learning our kids receive. Research overwhelmingly supports in-person learning, especially for the younger kids. And I just feel like their return cannot be put on hold any longer. So I would like someone to advocate for kids who are struggling and for working parents. And I want you to prioritize these kids. My second point is I'd like the superintendent to clarify remarks about child vaccine that he made during a conversation with the education committee. He seems to believe a vaccine will be available this summer for children. And if the availability of vaccine in any way will influence the return to full-time learning in the fall, we need to know now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Monica Studer.
Yes? Hi, this is Monica Studer, 7 White Court.
Hi, go ahead.
Hi, this is Monica Studer, 7 White Court. Do you hear me now?
Yep.
Great. Well, I echo everything Ulrika just said, and I just want to reiterate the point. I would like the superintendent and school committee to focus on developing and approving a revised school reopening plan that increased the amount of in-person learning for K-12 and transitions to a full-time in-person model. After that, April vacation week, the latest, has been too long, but the learning of our kids has been sacrificed. Some people dismiss our concerns by saying the kids are resilient, that they will bounce back. But the truth is that many kids, kids in private school, kids in Catholic schools, kids in other states, kids in other countries, are actually in school full-time. They're safe, they're learning and thriving. Meanwhile, it needs to be recognized that the learning in public school has been suboptimal at best, despite huge efforts made by the teachers. Many kids are falling behind academically, and many parents start to hire tutors to help them close the widening gap. COVID risk groups are being vaccinated, and at the same time, the COVID cases are falling rapidly. Schools have proven to be safer with the measures that have been put in place. This has been proven by countless studies, and even the most conservative groups are realizing this and coming back to school. We have learned so much about this virus since last March, and it's time that school opening plans are adjusted to reflect the scientific and empirical evidence. There wasn't any virus transmission in school, especially not among students or from students to teachers. Seventy percent of Newburyport parents wanted in full, full in-person learning last summer, and I can only imagine what these percentages look like right now, where we know that school is safe. People are anxious to hear what the concrete plan says with regard to increasing in-person learning. People are left to speculate what will be after April vacation or even in the fall. We need you to provide leadership necessary and ask the superintendent to provide a concrete plan and timely, when in-person learning is increased, how it will achieve by then, and based on big metrics will be transitioning. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Studer. Next up, I have Amy. There's no last name there. So... Actually, I am sorry, Amy. It's saying that your version of Zoom is older and can't be used to talk. Give me one second. I'll go to the next person, see if I can fix that for you. Can Caitlin Brosnan come up, please?
Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. Hi, this is Caitlin Brosnan. I live at 11 Forrester Street. I'm the parent of a Cohort A first grader at the Brez. I want to say I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this school year, the flexibility of our educators and administrators, learning how to teach during a pandemic. I understand and support the caution that has been used in our community to help manage the spread of COVID. The data is now showing a major trend down in case spread, and both CDC and DESI have adjusted their guidelines around in-person learning. As the numbers continue to decrease, and we have seen that we can have children in school safely with measures in place to prevent significant community spread, particularly at the elementary school level. I'm concerned that there does not seem to be a detailed plan with measurable milestones or metrics that progress toward full-in-time, full-time in-person learning. I have spent my career in child and adolescent mental health. I'm a licensed social worker and a mass licensed school adjustment counselor. I'm concerned about the mental health and development of the children in our community, and I see it firsthand with my own child. He's desperately missing peer interaction and socialization on a daily basis. While education and learning is extremely important, our children's egos and sense of self are built on peer feedback, interaction, and play. And I really worry that the isolation in online learning is going to have a huge impact on the future development of our children. As a parent, I would like to know what the education team needs to be in order to increase in-school learning days and return to a full-time schedule for our kids.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to try and see if I can get Amy... Last name to be determined, to be able to speak. So let's see if this turns on properly. That seems to have worked.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm Amy LeBlank. I live at 18 Woodman Way, Apartment 1. I spoke a couple weeks ago. I have a kindergartner at the Breznehan, and he's in Cohort C. And I am going to speak for those families that really, those kids really need to be in. They have such a hard time with academics at home. I mean, my son was on Zoom looking off to the corner of the room. He has vision issues. He has PT issues. He has OT issues. He has academic issues where he's pulled out four days a week, twice a day, to work with a teacher. You know, he receives a lot of services. There's a lot of other kids that receive services. And Cohort C kids are Cohort C for a reason. They're supposed to be in school, and when they're remote, it's just too hard. I mean, you have kids crying because they can't, or having a hard time writing, or having a hard time doing math. They really need to be in, along with all the other kids. I support what Ulrika said and Mrs. Studer. They really need to be in. I mean, it's been a long time. I work in a school, in a, in a sub-separate classroom. A public school. I see what the kids are going through, and it's just, it's too much. They need to be back in. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we have a few more. Can we ask Ms. Haley Knutson?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you. Haley Knutson, 7 Columbus Avenue, Newburyport. I, I'm just going to echo what you've been told by everybody else. I think they said it eloquently, and I don't want to repeat it. Besides which, I think the governor did a good job today of setting out what I was going to say. And I think based on what the governor said about mandating schools going back to full-time by April, I'm wondering if a plan, if you have a plan, it needs to be adjusted for that. And I'd be interested to hear what that would be. So I guess for me, the other point I just want to make is that we're feeling a little frustrated by the lack of communication by the district on an actual plan to bring our children back to school full-time. I know that might change based on what the governor said today. But whatever it changes to, I think the communication needs to be thrown wide open to the family. So we actually feel like we know what's happening. Because people are a little panicked that things are not going back. People are signing their kids up for private school. People are having contingency plans in place in case public schools don't go back. And I think we just, we're seeing other districts, Pennsyl, North Andover, other ones across the country, communicating with the, with the community, telling them what's happening, and we really haven't had that. We need a plan. We need a solid plan, not just quotations, understanding about how to do it as an actual plan. And that's all I, I want to say. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We have Cindy Doyle up next.
Hi, everybody. I just wanted to reiterate whatever Announce has said, that I think it's really important that we have a plan to bring our kids back into school four to five days a week. And I'm really hoping that that's something you guys are considering. I think even if there's something we could do, that following April vacation, that the kids come back full-time to finish out the school would have a huge impact on our children. Really appreciate everything that everybody is doing and how difficult this time has been. But at this point in time, I do agree with all the other parents on the call, that it's been too long, and it's causing too much stress with our children. So please consider it, and please do everything possible. I think it's critically important. Thanks for giving me a moment. Oh, I live at 62 Middle Street, and I have a daughter in kindergarten, or a daughter in second grade, and a son in kindergarten. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next up is Sharif Zied. Mr. Zied?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. This is Sharif Zied, Water Street, and the Ward 1 City Councilor. My comments, first, I want to offer my support to the, to the other parents that have spoken tonight with respect to, you know, looking at the relatively short term as far as reopening. But just in concert with the, the theme of tonight's meeting, which is really a look ahead to the FY22 budget, I just wanted to jump in early in the process and, and just say that really what I'm after and what I'm interested in is seeing contingency planning. So, you know, in other words, the kids need to be back to school in the fall, sort of no matter what the situation is. And the budget needs to reflect that and show how it would be funded. So obviously, no one can guess exactly what the fall is going to be, but I think there are a certain finite number of scenarios that one could imagine, you know? On, on the ideal side of things, COVID is essentially largely gone. On the other side, it's maybe still here, or prevalent, or there's another wave, or who knows what. And then there's a multitude of potential scenarios that could exist in the middle. But I think what you're hearing tonight is, is even shorter-term, looking at April. But again, just in concert with, with the theme of tonight's meeting, which is FY22, that's what I'm asking for consideration of by the school committee, is demonstrating that, you know, no matter what happens in the fall, there's a plan for every contingency. And with that, I'll yield and just congratulate Nurse Ricchio. I don't know if she's still on the call, but congrats on her award. Thank you for taking the time to listen. Have a great meeting.
Great, thank you. Next up, we have CJ LeBlank.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Charles LeBlank. I also live at 18 Woodman Way in Newburyport. I just want to say I agree with everybody, including my wife, who just spoke a few minutes ago. And I also just hope that the school committee, when looking at the governor's request for schools to go back full-time starting in April, that you look at the science and not give in to the state and national union pressures to not go back to school yet, that you, you know, look at the science and follow it, and not, you know, just do what's best for the kids in the school district, and not what's best for the national and state unions, because it's not necessarily the same thing. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And it looks like the last hand we have is Katie Accardi.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, go right ahead.
Okay. Hi, this is Katie Accardi. I live at 41A Merrimack Street. Obviously, I just don't, I don't want to repeat, but the sentiment is the same as the other parents on the call. And I would agree, I think not only, obviously, the focus should be for the children to get back in-person following April vacation, if not sooner. I mean, there's been six months, and there has not been any progress in terms of bringing them back on Wednesdays, alternating the cohorts on Wednesdays. We've seen other communities in the surrounding area, Pennsyl is one. I know that in fact, they have their kindergarten, kindergartners back in person. They have slowly brought all the classes back in, in that, in that grade. And I know they're working on doing so for the other grades, and their superintendent has been communicating that. I think just as a community, we would like to see a lot more communication. And then that's going to give people hope for the fall, where we haven't seen any progress in the last six months, and numbers are dropping, and situation is improving. It's sad to even think that folks are questioning what the fall is going to look like, because we would think we would only be moving forward, but people are questioning that because of, you know, not having any assurance to know how we're taking steps forward now, what, what is the fall possibly going to be looking like. So I guess just as a parent, we're asking for more open communication and actual plans to see where we can, where we're going to go from here, and so that the fall is not of a question. I mean, that's really, that's all I have to say.
Great, thank you. And we do have another hand, Eric Scorsia, I believe. Eric, are you there? I believe you're muted.
Am I off now?
Yep, you're, we can hear you now. Go ahead.
Hi, Eric Scorsia. I live at 16 Borbo in Newburyport. We have a pre-K and a first grader. Completely agree with everyone who's spoken already. Definitely need to, you know, get the kids back, learning more, you know, face-to-face time and less Zoom time. Also, the communication piece, I think was key. It's like, as a parent, we've been completely in the dark since the beginning, even going into the fall, not knowing, and now, you know, still not knowing. And then lastly, I'd like to hear, you know, how we plan to assess kids to see what they've learned, you know, if they've learned over the last year, and how that impacts them next year. Are we simply kind of moving along business as usual? Are we going to, you know, start next year off kind of at the back grade level and factor all that in? And just a true acknowledgement of like, what have our kids actually learned? Have they learned? Where are they? And what we can do for them? Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, is there anybody else who has a public comment? Going once, going twice. All right. Public comment is over. All right, where are we at? Consent agenda. Mr. Cole, we have a consent agenda. Is Steve still here? Steve?
Hello?
Steve, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Consent agenda, you're up.
Okay, great. Three warrants. The first one, I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $11,029.65 be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. I believe we need a roll call vote. Mrs. Kennedy?
Yes. Mayor Holliday.
Yes.
Dave, Mr. Hawkeiser.
Yes.
Mr. Menon.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Mr. Redden.
Yes.
And Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six. And who am I missing?
Mr. Cole.
Mr. Cole, sorry.
That's okay. Yes.
Okay. All yes.
All right, the second warrant. I move that the following name bills and payrolls of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $14,880.48 be approved for the city auditor to make payment and deduct the funds from the school's account. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? Hearing none. Can we have another roll call vote, please?
Mr. Redden.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkeiser.
Yes.
Mayor Holliday.
Yes.
Mr. Menon.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Cole.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All yes.
And the last warrant. I move that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the And the last warrant, I moved that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate four hundred, sixty five thousand, two hundred, sixty two dollars and seventeen cents be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There are no conflicts.
Second.
Sorry, discussion? Mr. Menon, I believe you had something about this set of minutes. You're muted, Bruce.
My concern is the February first minutes. Is that what we're doing now?
No, we're doing the warrant.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
We haven't done a roll call vote on that last warrant. Warrant.
Don't be deleted again.
Mr. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkeizer.
Yes.
Mr. Menon.
Yes.
Mayor Holiday.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, and
Your favorite one, Mrs. Kennedy.
Oh, sure, Mr. Ridden, my cutesy little nineteen sixty grad, nineteen eighty two graduate, ninety, ninety three.
Ninety three, come on, Mrs. Kennedy, yes.
I'm doing all my, my children. Okay.
Okay, so with that, I apologize. Where are we at right now? I may know where we're at.
We're at the minutes.
We're at the minutes.
Okay. For February first, correct?
Brian, Brian, you might want to take, yeah, you might want to put two of them together and take out the one that Bruce has a question on. Maybe we can vote on two at once or discuss two at once, so we don't have to do two votes and then
There's three sets.
Yeah, I know, I know, leave the, leave the third one separate because, right.
Okay, so we're talking about the minutes from twelve, seven and twelve, twenty one, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Collectively approve minutes from the two December meetings.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Any, all right, another roll call vote. I'm sorry, roll call on that one, Mrs. Kennedy?
Yes.
This is time consuming, always roll.
No, this is ridiculous. All right, here we go. Mr. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Mr. Ridden.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkeizer.
Yes.
Mayor Holiday.
Yes.
Mr. Menon.
Yes.
And one, two, three, four, five, six. Who am I missing again?
Mr. Callahan.
Mr. Mr. Callahan, I'm sorry.
That's okay, yes. Can we get a roll call on the twelve, twenty one minutes?
I don't think we have to do a roll call on that one because we did them both together.
That's good, we're all good.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Okay. So to the two, one minutes, can we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second it so we can have discussion.
Discussion.
Bruce had something.
Mr. Menon?
Yeah, I'm actually going to move to table these minutes till the next meeting. My concern actually stems from the last meeting. It continues through this meeting. We have a legal and affirmative obligation to protect the identity of students, especially special ed students. And I don't personally believe that we should be taking comments on individual children and allowing the conveyance of information that can identify them very specifically. The minutes, Joanne did a wonderful job and recorded everything that that particular parent said. I don't believe it belongs in a set of minutes, and I think that it's it's a violation of our responsibility to protect kids.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
No discussion on the table.
All right, so I'm going to have to ask for your help here. How do we proceed in this type of thing?
The motion is to table. She was second. All those roll call in favor.
Roll call in favor, please.
Okay, here we go. Mr. Hawkeizer.
Yes.
Mayor Holiday.
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Menon.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Ridden.
Yes.
Mr. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion? Because I think it again happened tonight. Can maybe from now on, when we open up public comment, in addition to asking people to refrain from going over two minutes, we could ask them to not discuss their own children and situations.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. I know I, in the past, have gone up and said, I can relate to this as my child X, but I don't have a problem with that. I don't know if we could actually stop anybody from saying it. Because we can't, we can't remove things from minutes, is that correct? Once they're in there or once it's been said aloud?
No, I'm not saying that we, that we're going to be able to stop people from saying it, but just, just to remind them that if, you know, whatever's mentioned here is public record and it's going to end up in in minutes at some point. And we'd prefer if they didn't speak about their own children and this, their academic situations openly.
Okay, sure.
What I could do is leave that particular part out of the minutes when I'm typing them, if that would help. I know.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, you can say that, you know, that in this public comment from this particular individual, they raised concerns about students in the district being, you know, becoming depressed or whatever. I don't think, again, you know, where we, where we collect all this data on Zoom and on the public record and then perpetuate it on the public record that makes it easy to identify these particular individual children. I, I just viscerally respond to that. I just think it's not
I will take care of that.
And we can also, we can also amend any minutes and just because it's written down in the minutes, doesn't mean it has to stay there.
Can de-identify, okay.
I'll take care of it in the minutes, though.
Okay, great, thank you. Number five, NHS Student Representative Report from Ms. Sierra Leahy.
All right, thank you. To start off the report, students part of the theater program are adding final touches for their production of arsenic and old lace. Over the past few months, they have worked extremely hard to make the show happen. Our students will livestream three performances. The dates are March eleventh, twelfth and thirteenth, all starting at seven PM. A flyer was recently sent home for families to purchase tickets to the show. Before the vacation, our Arts Honor Society made Valentine's Day cards for the nursing staff at the Parkland Medical Center. Based on the thank you message the school received, it is clear the gesture was well received by the staff at the center. The school is very appreciative of the effort made by the AHS. We have officially moved on to fall season two with football, volleyball and indoor track getting underway this week. Good luck to those teams on their seasons. Our winter sports teams met great success this past season. We ended up with three Cape Anne League Championships, both girls and boys basketball teams and the boys hockey team. Also, girls hockey and boys and girls swim teams all had winning records and many of our skiers qualified for the interscholastic competition. So far this year, our teams have met great success. Recently, the Daily News published an article, Newburyport Athletics Enjoying Unprecedented Run of Success in twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. And just to summarize it a bit, boys basketball was ten and oh and twelve and oh, the Cal regular season champions for their third consecutive year and Cal tournament champions. Boys and hot, boys hockey was eight and one, ten, one and one, Cal regular season champions, Cal tournament champions. Girls basketball was ten and zero and then eleven and one. Cal regular season champions first time since two thousand and twelve and Cal tournament finalists. Girls hockey was seven, four and two. They were the first team in school history. They finished third out of eight teams. Boy swim was four and one. They finished third in Cal meet. Girls swim was four and one, and they also finished third in Cal meet. Boy ski was two and six and girl ski was three and five. Last but not least, over a hundred juniors are taking the PSAT at the high school tomorrow. I want to wish some good luck on their exam.
Excellent, great stats from our sports teams. Thank you, Ms. Leahy. Let's see, where are we at? Everybody all set with that? Good? Any questions? No? Okay, we have the School Committee Representative Vacancy for Whittier Tech. I spoke to the current rep, or one of the two rather, Ben Fashara. His term ends on March thirty first and he has decided not to continue. So the way this works is the school committee will post the public request for letters of interest, which will be sent to Joanne Yellin Superintendent's office, will then interview the candidates at a public school committee meeting and then vote for the candidate we feel will do the best job at that time. Thanks to Bruce Menon for giving me the heads up on how that actually works. So people who've been here before, do we send out a job description, how in a district email, or how does that normally go?
I would recommend that we do a press release. You know, and post it on the school website as well as in the Daily News and let people know that there is a vacancy representing the city of Newburyport on the Whittier School Committee and maybe a little more details. It meets, you know, once or twice a month and a little more detail on what the job entails. And certainly, I think we should get that out next week.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to suggest that we work from March thirty first, sort of back in terms of our own. You know, I, in theory, I would love to be able to be interviewing people at our last meeting in March so that we've got somebody ready to go and there isn't a lapse.
Okay, who writes up that press release?
I would be happy to.
Excellent. All right, well, there we go. Thank you very much.
Is this, is this someone that serves on, whose kids go to Whittier usually, or do we open this up to everybody?
It's opened up to everybody. It's the same thing as a school committee member here. You don't necessarily have to have a student in the school district.
Okay.
Any other questions about that? Nope. Okay, number seven, this is actually going to be run by Dave Hawkeizer. It's the Policy Subcommittee.
Sheila's here, Brian.
She is. Sheila, are you okay to go with this? You're muted.
Sorry, yes, I am.
You are, okay, all right. Well, Ms. Spalding is going to go through the school enrollment residency policy revision from the Subcommittee.
Yes, it was a very minor revision to the school enrollment residency policy and it's under section V. Subsection C, it's just adding the words to this sentence. So it says students, it currently read students who are entitled to attend the Newburyport Public Schools under the McKinney Vento Homeless Assistant Act. And it will add in the word students who are in foster care or who are entitled to attend the Newburyport Public Schools. So it just adds those five words in there. And we are to consider this a first reading. And then we will have to do a second reading next, next week.
Motion to approve the school enrollment residency policy, JBCA.
Okay, so all right. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Okey dokey, here we go again.
I think that's the last one for tonight.
All right, let me just get this. All right, Ms. Spalding.
Yes.
Mr. Hawkeizer. David. Mr. Hawkeizer.
You're muted. David, you're muted. Sorry, wasn't working for me. Yes.
Okey dokey. Mayor Holiday.
Yes.
Mr. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Menon.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
And Mr. Ridden.
Yes.
All right, excellent. Number eight, moving right along here. We have the COVID reentry plans and vaccine discussion brought to you by Mr. Sean Gallagher.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'd like to update. I think there's been a lot of work going on behind the scenes for the district and once again, our medical advisory team, Kathy Ricchio, doing, doing a lot of great work. So as we know, a couple of weeks ago, we did testing for all the faculty and support staff with the idea of beginning to pool test, which is being sponsored by the state, free testing, pool testing and surveillance testing. So today, we began a pilot practice test because we have software and the testing process. So we tested some faculty members today, over twenty for a practice run. We are also going to do another practice run for the surveillance testing for another group of faculty members and high school students on Friday morning. The following week after this week, we will start to increase the pools. So we can really develop well-run protocols and procedures with the surveillance testing. Then the week of March seventh, we plan on increasing, once again, and developing more of a comprehensive testing program for staff along with students. And we'll maintain that as long as those resources are provided. As you know, there's a lot of moving parts to surveillance testing. So this rollout, this phased in rollout practice, I think is going to give us an opportunity to work out the glitches. So by the time we have the comprehensive pool testing, it will be sustainable and then will be very successful. So you know, Kathy Ricchio and our nursing team, along with some clerical help, has been great with the planning for that. So we're excited about that. We're excited for that today. And that's, I think, just another addition to providing a safe learning environment for all students and staff. And on the other side is the work behind the scenes regarding vaccinations. As you're aware, educators are in the phase two aspect, but we're kind of on the back end of the phase two. And we did have a potential date for this week to have shot one vaccinations for the educators. But Cataldo and working with the state, they postponed that because the priority right now was seventy five and older, now we're at sixty five and older. So our next target date is for March fifteenth for shot one. Hopefully, within the next three weeks or so, educators will be, begin the vaccination. So and once again, we've partnered with Cataldo and all the work that Mayor Holiday has done and working with Cataldo with the surveillance testing and now working with vaccination, it just shows a team effort, not only on the school side, but the city side. So if all goes well, if we can get that first shot on March fifteenth, then we would be looking at the second shot of April twelfth, which would be the week right before the April vacation. So if we can move forward with that, we would, I think we'd be in great shape with our faculty and support staff being vaccinated. And that would be very helpful. As far as the learning model plan, so and we do have this posted and we did provide it as part of the packet. In September, I think we did a great job in developing a comprehensive reentry plan with the increase. And if we recall back in, I think it was September twenty eighth, we developed that plan. And then we were initially, as you go back in history, we were looking to start bringing more in person November second. And the goal back then was if the cases would stay low, we would bring more in person students back November second for the three weeks. And then we were going to have the Thanksgiving break, but as we know, in October and November, December, the cases have skyrocketed. So we've maintained our hybrid learning model, although we were, I think, dealing with a lot of positive cases in the city, but also we've, you know, we were dealing with cases within the school system. But we maintained a hybrid learning model throughout the fall. But we maintained a hybrid learning model throughout the fall. And I think we go back to the same process, you know, we've been looking at weekly meetings with the medical advisory team and looking at the data and we have seen, as everyone has pointed out, we've seen a dip or a decrease in positive cases each week for the past three weeks. And now we're going back to our transition planning and utilizing those guidelines that we developed to begin to bring students back. We have a medical advisory team meeting again tomorrow. And we've been behind the scenes, taking a look at different models of bringing students back with the leadership team. The other piece is, I also want to mention like where I'm very fortunate in my personal family in the sense that COVID has not had an impact. We had a couple scares where, you know, we had a quarantine. My daughter was in close contact and had a quarantine. But we were very fortunate in the sense of not being impacted. But we have 400 employees and I'd just like the public to understand that of the 400 employees, many of them have not been so fortunate. Many of our teachers have lost their moms, have lost their dads, have lost their brothers, have lost their sisters. I have some people within our school system that have been hospitalized. Because of COVID, we have some people in our system that have been hospitalized and have not been able to return to school. So it, although we're, we're hopeful and we're gonna continue to plan and with the sense of bringing more students back and in person. This pandemic and this disease has had some major impacts on some of our personnel. So it, it is a, as they say, a deadly virus. And sometimes when we look at statistics and, you know, it's only affects those type of people or these people. It doesn't affect many people. But within our system, it has had a personal effects on a lot of our families and also a lot of our faculty members. So I think we always want to keep that in mind and I agree with a lot of the public comment. I agree. And in the sense that we're, we're now seeing the dip, we're now back to take a look at the transition plan. And now we're starting to take a look at bringing more students back because we've seen that consistent dip over the three-week period. So I think our transition plan really articulated a phase two. We're taking a look at the remote Wednesdays to bring more in-person back. And then also when you start looking at a phase three, it talks in there about vaccinations. It also talks about the guidelines of Massachusetts and reducing the guidelines. So all of those factors are now coming into play where we can start to really think about and begin to start bringing more, more students back as safely as possible. So I think that's kind of where we're at. The other important piece for the families is we are also gonna be sending out a survey in the next day or two to get information, because although many families or the families that have spoken up about fullback in-person, there are also, could be families that are very comfortable with a six-foot social distancing and all the safety protocols, but may not be as comfortable if you start to reduce that social distancing. So our survey will give us some survey data for families that are in the hybrid model now that would be willing to come back if the social distancing is reduced. So I think that that will be information from parents that will be provided to the district. So we can start to formulate, you know, some specific plans on having students return. So I think that that's, I think that's gonna be also another big piece. In the meantime, as I said, taking a look and, and our reentry plan is online. And I think the guidelines are, are in there that provide us, I think, information to go by in the sense of bringing students back safely. So we're back to taking a look at that and utilizing that. As I said, the administration is, at each building, is now starting to work with our, you know, union and the teachers to start taking a look at in-person and doing a feasibility study on what that would look like of bringing, you know, all kids back, full return, phased-in return. So all of this work has been going on behind the scenes the last couple of weeks. I think we've been focusing on the surveillance testing and also the vaccination because that gives us, I think, specific data points where we can make informed decisions. And so I think this was also part of, the transition plan was also part of the packet. And it's also been posted. And I think as we have more concrete information and detailed plans will be communicated with families. But we are in that transition phase, as we said, when the cases go down and we start to stabilize, then the game plan is, begin to start bringing more students back. So that's kind of where we're at with, I think, our COVID update. I think for us, probably each school committee, we will continue to have a COVID update and continue to have the discussion on what more in-person is gonna look like over the next few weeks. And then, as I said, I think we're all kind of on the, the same page in the sense that our educators, myself, the community, we want to bring our students back. We just want to make sure we do it as safely as possible and as successful as possible. So that's kind of our COVID summary from the district.
Uh, thank you, Superintendent. There's multiple hands up. We have Mr. Menon.
Um, thank you, Superintendent. You know, it's nice to see things moving along. And I, you know, I appreciate how strongly the state has been, the governor has been advocating for us to return to schools. Are you aware, has the department, has DESI changed any of the existing protocols in accordance with the governor's request that we bring kids back to school?
Well, and I think that's, that's a great question. And I think we're waiting for that official notice. I know there's been, I think, a lot of talk on the news. He has, the commissioner has scheduled the superintendent's webinar or conference call for this Thursday. So maybe some of those guidelines in specifics will get some more details.
And that would obviously help if, if, you know, if they made some changes in the protocols, we'd be able to bring more kids back.
Correct. It's on, exactly. I think it kind, yes.
Uh, Ms. Spalding, you had a hand up?
Yes, my question was similar to Bruce Menon's question. It was about Governor Baker's recent announcement that he would like us to return, students to return full in-person by April.
Yes. So the public knows, the, when there's no movement, the lights go off. So we are saving money that way too. So we'll put that in the budget. But yes, I think, I think that's kind of what many of the districts are looking at is, is the guidelines. But I think for us, even with our guidelines and when you look at our phasing, we don't necessarily have to reduce guidelines. I think full in-person to bring all students back all at once, I think we need to have a discussion on the guidelines. But for us to start transitioning to bring more students back in a phased-in approach, I think with the existing guidelines, I think we can work together as a school community to do that. So.
Uh, Mr. Reardon has a question.
Thank you. Superintendent Gallagher, have we had any positive cases in the district since, let's say, January 20th?
I believe we have. I know Kathy Ricchio is on the, on the line, but I know, you know, after the break, we've had a staff member, a positive case. So it's not like it was where we were seeing, you know, a, a big number, but it has been dropping within the school system. The, the best news that, that we have, and, and this is probably why Kathy Ricchio got that award, Mr. Reardon, is even when we've had the cases, because of the social distancing, because of the protocols, we have not seen transmission in schools. So that's also gives us hope as we start phasing in more students coming back, that the protocols are in place that, that are working.
So i- if our goal right now is to have all of our teachers vaccinated by, you know, April 15th, I mean, do you feel good that we could probably? You're talking about another week after they get their second shot, coming back in school Monday, April 26th. We've got two months to plan here. I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, where's the light? I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't see why where, you know, again, you'll find out Thursday about the, the changing state regulations from the commissioner, which again, we hope. I mean, it sounds like that they're going that way if Baker's coming out today saying what he's saying. The CDC has come out and not even mentioning vaccines as a, as a, you know, a qualification to go back to full in-person learning. They're talking about social distancing, three feet, washing your hands, wearing masks, with, you know, all things we're already doing in our schools, except for the three feet. You know, we, we put that plan together at the beginning of the year and I know you referenced that being on the website. I, I just, I just think things are, things are turning in a different direction and I think for the positives. So I, I just hope that we're at concrete, different plan in place that, that following this, you know, as the safety guidelines. And I, and again, I, I'm thankful that we're moving in, in the right direction and I appreciative of all the work in the district. So, you know, I just hope that, that we don't lose sight of, again, I think we'll be ahead of a lot of districts. Some districts are already back to full term in person. I think we'll still be ahead of them as far as getting our teachers vaccinated. And, uh, you know, I thank the mayor and I thank you for being proactive in that. So I, I just hope we're, we're, we're very forthcoming with, with what, what, what the goals are and really, you know, letting parents know, you know, this is where we want to be. April 26th, we want to be back full person and this is how we're gonna get there.
Yeah, I think that, I think for, since day one, we've been doing a lot of planning behind the scenes with the ultimate goal of bringing people back. Absolutely.
I just think the behind the scenes stuff is great, but I think a lot of these things need to be, you know, us, just, just to keep us all, you know, again, on the same page and moving forward. I think you guys have been great, but I think we can, we can do even better.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Hawkeizer.
Most of what I was gonna talk about has been, has been said. So I guess I'll just ask if there's a preview for, like, what are we thinking about next? I mean, cause to me, first of all, I think a lot of the messaging coming out of the state has been really back and forth. Right? Like, we have to do this, but we can't do this. We want to bring people back, but we still have these restrictions. You know, we're gonna do MCAS testing was also, you know, the federal, the federal government said you guys have to do your state testing. So how are we gonna figure that out? Like, there's a lot of contradictions out there, which, which definitely worry me. And I, I have full faith that you and your team are getting the best news and, and have the most knowledge about all that. The only thing it sounds to me like we're not doing yet is the three, is going from six feet to three feet. Right? So is, is that something we're gonna start looking at next? Because like, you know, like Sean said, the CDC is, is kind of bypassing the need for, and unfortunately, I think, but they're bypassing the need for the, for the vaccine as a, as a prerequisite. So are we gonna be able to start, are we going to start looking at the, the six to three feet? Cause that seems to be the next hole, or is there something else we're thinking about?
Yeah. So where, I think right now, we're looking at the feasibility study. We're looking at working with the principals. That would be our phase three approach, right? As we articulated in the plan. But it would be looking at, you know, a three-foot model, a four-foot model, a five-foot model. And then in, in kind of seeing, you know, where we're at. So we're, we're, we're working on those details and those specifics. So I think, you know, for us, yes, it's 100% we're looking at that. And we're looking at when students are eating and, you know, the six-foot distancing, when you pull your mask down. So we're, we're behind the scenes, we're working all that. But I think right now, we've been focused on the surveillance testing, also the vaccination, and then looking at phase two, where we have that Wednesday remote day and working at the building levels. It may look a little bit different at each level, but right now, that's kind of what we're looking at with the ultimate goal of having full, full in-person down the road. So, but we are, we've been planning, but I don't think this district has waited. I mean, we listen to the recommendations, we listen to the governor, we're obviously listening to the commissioner. As you said, Mr. Hawkeizer, you know, we're also gonna have to be implementing an MCAS test because that's also part of the commissioner's update. But we also, I think, have a great medical advisory team. I think we've been kind of ahead of the curve, you know, for, for what we've done. And we're gonna continue to work with our medical advisory team. We listen to what's happening. But I think also the plan that we have of the guidelines that we're utilizing is very effective. And I think is a, it's a great, it's a great format for us to follow with the ultimate goal of bringing all kids back. I'll be, I think it's really also important for that survey to go out. Because, you know, I, I do feel that we may have some families and parents that are very comfortable with a six-foot distance with eight, you know, eight or nine students in a class. But when you start bringing, you know, 18, 17, 18, and maybe some cases up to 20 students in a class, some parents are gonna want to opt out of that. So that would also have an impact because we have to provide a full remote for those students. And if we had, let's say, 100 families or 200 families out of the 2,300 that say, you know, with this changing, the social distancing, I'm not comfortable sending my student, we're gonna have to provide. And that's, that's a whole nother dilemma. So I think for right now, working behind the scenes, kind of going through a lot of the phasing in, looking at a phase two Wednesday opportunities, looking at different social distancing structures. I think it's really important to get feedback from the families because that will, all of those details are gonna be helpful as we develop our plans. So for the parents that are listening, we will be sending out that survey to get parent input on, you know, their comfort level of down the road with the social distancing being reduced.
It's a good point you bring up because they were also talking about negating like the remote learning as a valid, as a valid option. And people, I mean, that's one of the things he said, like, kind of out of the blue. And, and a lot of people were just trying to figure out how they were gonna manage that.
Right.
Um, is there a way? Maybe not, I wouldn't think like every time, but is, is there a way that since Thursday seems to be like it might be a release of interesting, like a change in things, if we could, like, is there a way for everyone to find out what that is? It sounds like a lot of the people who came to public comments tonight were interested in, in just more information.
Sure. I think we can, and, you know, we, obviously I, I listened to that and tried to pride ourselves in the communication. But obviously, you know, the, for some families, it, it hasn't, you know, they like to hear more, but maybe we could give an update of where we're at for Friday. And then I could send out a connected, especially after the information from Thursday. And I'm hoping it's important information. But sometimes you don't know, but I think either way.
Please, please, please.
We will, we'll send a, a communication to all of our families on Friday, updating them of kind of where we're at.
Thank you.
Uh, Sean, I got just two quick questions. Shot two for the staff, you said the week of the 12th. Are they gun, if they're able to, on a technical level, to move that back to the ninth? So the staff has the weekend to deal with any potential side effects? Is that possible?
I think, we're, we're looking at that, the week of the 12th. I think the 12th is a Monday. So if we got that for the first, if we got the first shot to March 15th, we, we would probably do a professional development day on the 16th. So that would be the Friday before the vacation. So that would be the Friday before the vacation. So if they get the second shot and they get ill, then they have the weekend to recover, or if they have to leave after the second shot, because then we're not feeling well, it could be any one of us. Then they can go home on that Friday.
So the, the Friday of the week for the twelfth, so the sixteenth.
Yeah, that would be a target, you know. Right now, it's not specific, but it's, it's kind of what I would hope for if we could get that first shot the week of the fifteenth.
Okay. Um, the data that we get in the medical team meetings, you know, once it's de-identified, which should be quick enough to, you know, take away any identifying information. Can we start sending that out in a district email that says, okay, here's the city numbers, here's the district numbers? I don't think people really understand that they're not attached.
Correct. So we also have, and what I can do is probably, is out of the Friday messaging, I'll put a link into that dashboard that we have. It's right on the, it's updated each week, so people can even go all the way back to when we started first having the cases and kind of look at the data of where we're at.
And that shows the city separate from the school district?
I believe it does, yes.
If we get it from Pan, the Public Health? Okay. And one more quick thing. It's, it seems that the, you know, we go to three feet. The major thing, once we do that, if we're able to do that, is that eating is a problem, right?
Yeah. So, so that's.
Well, so you guys are gonna try and think outside the box. You know, but I go back to September, when for some reason we were unable to use the gym as a classroom. And then we tried to do tents and everything, and then everybody sold out of all their tents. But now we have football starting, so the field is taken up.
Yeah.
Right? So, I mean, how, and, and people have said to me, hey, it's gonna be nice out. Well, maybe it's gonna be nice, or maybe, maybe April's a washout and it's forty degrees every day, right? It's Massachusetts.
Florida.
So if it's something as simple as eating, and I know other districts have said, hey, we're in five days. Well, it turns out that those kids are going home every day at twelve-thirty.
Correct.
Which stinks for everybody, right? I, I just would love to see if it, if it's something as, you know, simple as being able to eat, but that's keeping people out of school. I, I don't know. I'm gonna leave it up to you guys.
No, no, we'll, we'll, we'll figure it. We, I'll tell you, our, our building administrators that are on this call right now, they're phenomenal planners, they're phenomenal administrators. And, you know, the, the, in Newburyport, I think where there's a will, there's a way. And so some of those big obstacles around safety and pulling your mask down and eating lunch at a six-foot distance, you know, we'll, we'll be working out different scenarios for that.
Good. Thanks. And I believe Sean has his hand up again.
Yeah, I, I just had a quick question. Uh, Sean, do we have an option to, to, to opt out of MCAS? I'm just asking a question. No? Or, or do you have, or, or is it just opting out of like it being a graduation requirement? I just was wondering if there's any kind of?
It's, um, well, I know, um, I think you froze a little bit, but I know, no, it's okay. I know uh, from the superintendents and when we have discussions regarding standardized testing, that's always been brought up, you know, each time we've had a meeting with the commissioner. And I'm sure this Thursday, you know, it will also be brought up again because right now the students that are in remote academy, the, the kids that are home are not obligated to take the MCAS. It's just the students that are in the hybrid model right now. So so you're looking at, you know, it's just that you, your data is gonna be skewed other than the individual data from student to student, but you're not gonna get a good flavor of an entire class. So.
Right.
But right now, if, you know, they have modified the MCAS. So if you recall, uh, April and, and May, there was two sessions of ELA and, and math. And right now it's only one session, so they really modified the MCAS testing. But it, it is, um, you know, I, you know, I agree in the sense of we're, we're trying to work as a district to bring more, more students in and, you know, you finally get students in and now you're spending time.
Yeah, no, and, and I know we talked about this a little bit during policy. I mean, it, it, it's pretty ridiculous. You're not gonna really gain anything by that assessments. And just for people at home, you know, you know, the district uses their own assessments. And, and that, those, that, that information the teacher gets and the data they get from that, that, that gets right back to them, and that can really drive instruction. Which, which isn't the case with MCAS. I, I just don't know if everyone knows that. We haven't had a data meeting in over a year now, right? So where a lot of that's presented. So, I mean, those types of things are happening in schools, and I, I do think teachers have a handle on what the learning loss looks like and where, where, where the gaps are. You know, that's not necessarily something that we're gonna get from the state. We're doing that in district already.
Correct. And I agree a hundred percent, and, and that's part of working with the teachers. And, and I think in the future, as, as we start, and right now we're focused on budget the next, you know, couple of weeks. Uh, but we're also gonna stop bringing back our data teams and really explain to the public and also the school community where we're at with some of the data, internal assessments that we've been using for the students. Thank you.
Yeah, I just had one, one last, one quick question. Because, you know, we've heard a lot about pool testing. Is that a measure that's being considered in your report?
Regarding on bringing students back with the pool testing?
Or, or just as a, just as a tool, if you will.
Yeah, absolutely. Be, you know, with, when we start to have the comprehensive pool testing, then we actually have a better understanding of cases that are impacting the schools themselves. So it's, it's not random and, you know, all of a sudden you're waiting for someone to get ill. You can actually start to monitor and, and guess on, um, you're not guessing anymore. You actually will start having more accurate data to make more informed decisions regarding in-person learning. So, yes, that's.
Sean, I think, Sean, I think you need to get a cat at the office just so that it can move through the room and turn the lights back on.
Or some strobe lights. He's like clubbing over there.
Can't you just throw a tennis ball at it?
Um, does anybody else have any questions for the superintendent on item number eight? No. All right. Uh, number nine, fiscal year twenty-two preliminary budget presentation again.
Thank you. If the lights go on, on this, does that mean the meeting's over, or do we keep going? All right, let me just pull up my some of my notes, and then I'll do a, um, share screen here. Let's pull this down. All right. All right, I think, Mr. Callahan, you have to.
You're not allowed, sorry about that.
Allow the screen, yeah.
Yeah, that doesn't, I don't see anything that's not allowing you to do that.
Most disabled participant. Is there, it's on the secure. Is there, you have like the little shield there?
Yeah.
Share screen.
How's this happening again? Ah, here we go. All right.
All right.
There you go.
All set?
You should be good.
Perfect. Can you see the PowerPoint yet or no? All right.
There you go.
All right, great. Uh, you missed. All right, here we go. A little firework. That's slide two. That was supposed to, like, really motivate you all. So here's our, uh, this is our preliminary budget overview. This was, I want to thank obviously Nancy Lysick and all of our budget holders for all their work, and also the school councils for all of their work. So this is the old, this is the preliminary. This is really a lot, if not all, the ask throughout the district. So this is our basic starting point. And then we will have multiple budget deliberations with the leadership team and the budget holders to develop a district-wide priority list. But here's our, you know, mission. And, and I really, I think, you know, this kind of drove a lot of our thinking, not only with the budget, but also with a lot of our, the, the civil unrest, a lot of the, the pandemic, everything that we've dealt with. I think as a district, we can always go back to Newburyport, great tradition. But we're also, I think, always being innovative and creative. And I think this is just a, a great message for us and our community, you know, the port where tradition and innovation converge. So as we develop our budget, our strategic plan, as we go through a lot of the budget items and requests, you can see that the strategic vision also is alive and well within our budget design along with, you know, dealing with a, a lot of the pandemic issues and the learning loss as, as we move forward. So we really focused on, there's four areas we focused on throughout our budget. Number one is the social emotional health of our students, especially on a full return. I think for us, that's really important. And you'll see not only a lot of intervention, but we'll also a lot of the social emotional support as our students come back. I think the second piece for us is our curriculum instruction and assessment. Which you also see tied to the strategic planning and the continuation work there, but also looking at the potential learning loss for our students as we head into our budget season in preparation for next year and the year after. The other piece is strategic plan initiatives that throw out our goals here. And then you'll, I just tied in world language continuation, and then really our college and career pathways, which is not only the vision of the district moving forward, but also ties in to a lot of the action steps our strategic. And then this is also, I think, a very important area, instructional technology and communication. Where we're really taking a look at the technology to enhance our instruction, enhance the curriculum delivery. And then also the communication out to families. As, as we understand how important both of those items have been this past school year. So trends in data, every year, you know, we focus on really the, the four or five areas, school appropriation, figures, enrollment trends, school choice revenues, special education costs, and then the district priorities. So when we're looking at our trends, so if you look at over the years, you can see the city and, and has really increased the appropriations for the school system, every year increasing the budget. And then as Mayor Holliday has said many times, this is just a starting point. As we have a great worker relationship with our city, city council and. Trends in enrollment. So if you look at the years of enrollment, so you really, we've really only fluctuated around a hundred students throughout. So we don't have a big drop over many years. This year is an anomaly. Because we have many students that have chosen to go homeschooling because of the pandemic. And so we anticipate with those numbers of those students coming back into the district next year. And this was also another item that was brought up by superintendents for enrollment. When you're looking at chapter seventy, they went by October first enrollment for this year during a pandemic. In many districts, if not all districts in the Commonwealth, have lost enrollment numbers, which is based on the chapter seventy formula. The one, I guess, silver lining for Newburyport is our chapter seventy funds many years is not something that, you know, we can rely on. It's more for other districts that really depend on chapter seventy funds. So just that formula in itself, the superintendent, and we met with some of the state officials that we really recommend, and they go by the former October first data of the previous year and not utilize these numbers. But as I said, these are enrollment trends, and, and you can see over the years, it's gone up and down about a hundred, a hundred students or so. Our school choice revenue. So school choice, back in oh-five, Newburyport was one of the, I think, the few districts in the Commonwealth that opened up school choice. So you can see the funding that went into that. And then this is really equivalent for a school system to free cash. So Nancy Lysick has done a, a great job throughout the years to maintain a fund balance in the school choice revenue. For us as emergency funds, as, as for, it could be for special education costs, it could be a move-in. And I think she's done a nice job maintaining the school choice revenue over the years. And that's also, I think, very helpful. So these are certain numbers that we've had. And, and that we, we carry over. Special ed, education, oop, I'm sorry, trends here. So as you look at the tuition, transportation, staffing, so I think one of the areas in working with Nancy Koch and having Deb O'Connor really work within our department is really program development. As we've been saying, you know, for the past couple of years here, that's been one of our goals and developing a therapeutic program. I think at the high school, and then also right now, we're in the process of developing a comprehensive language-based program. We're gonna provide, I think, programming needs for our Newburyport families. So for me, that is extremely important to have Newburyport families staying in Newburyport. I mean, although there are some circumstances where an outside placement is, is necessary and beneficial, our goal is to continue to build our programming needs to meet the needs of, of our students. And, you know, for the language base, that's gonna be really looking at reading disabilities. And we're also partnering right now with beginning talks with Landmark Outreach. Two-fold, one, to help us develop a comprehensive language-based program similar to the Landmark School, but also provide professional development and reading strategies for our general, general ed teachers. So we're working on it, I think, as a district to really enhance our strategies to, to identify reading disabilities at an earlier age and really for a lot across the board. So I want to thank, you know, Deb O'Connor and Nancy Koch and our team chairs, along with our principals, to really assist us with our language-based programming. So I think that's a, that's one of our goals. And you can see the tuition costs, although they've gone up, I think, where they're starting to level off. And then with the idea of bringing more students back, once our programs are up and running. So we're excited about that. Our budget overview for tonight, so we, we have also a two grant, which we're gonna cover and momentarily, but that's part of a stimulus package that came through. We're gonna talk about central office, the reorganization. We have a school-based staffing recommendations that we'll be covering, a work and budget summary, our revenue projections, our preliminary expense projections, and then our budget process and the next steps. So our SR two allocation was nine hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars to the district. This is a two-year grant. And as we were developing our budget, I, I kind of really see this as a two-year budget in the sense of having funding for the, the unknown, and we're hoping the unknown isn't like this year's unknown. We're hoping let it at the end of the tunnel, and we can get back to some, some normalcy next school year. But breaking down our SR two. Um, but breaking down our S A two grant allocations, um, so here are some stipends and staffing. So our summer school programming, we allocated, uh, forty thousand dollars, around forty thousand dollars. And this is for the learning loss, um, in developing summer programming for children, uh, and students, uh, throughout the summer. Um, and I think that this will be, uh, very important as, um, we can deal with potential learning loss, uh, for our students. So it's, um, not only the special education students, but for other at-risk populations. Um, as part of this is also, uh, to work on regression, um, and also to develop strategies, uh, math instructional coach. This is a two-year position, uh, to deal with learning loss in math. Um, and that's grant would be sixty-five thousand for this year and then utilizing S A grant money for the second year. We also, uh, part of our staffing needs through the S A grant, our behavioral health coordinator position, which would be, uh, an administrative position, uh, pre-K to 12, where this, uh, individual would, um, really work with our, uh, therapeutic programs, our Bright program, Home for Little Wanderers, and really assist and give an overview, um, for our students that are coming in, um, you know, with anxiety, uh, with depression, um, in the sense of coming back full-time. We just want to make sure that we're providing the needs and the mental health needs and social emotional needs for all of our students, uh, once they're back, uh, full-time. Our N H S and N H S essential partner work, um, that's working, uh, with our students and the communication, uh, in dialogue, that continuation. Um, so we have that in for two years. And then the Mullen School Interventionist, um, so this individual would be, uh, part of a one-year. S R grant, um, and Principal Rossi, um, and her staff would be utilizing, um, this once again, dealing with potential learning loss, uh, for the students. Our instructional technology through the grant, uh, the lease for the Chromebooks, uh, for two years, sixth grade Chromebooks for enhancement of technology, uh, third grade Chromebooks, uh, for the Breslin Hand, middle school tech software, uh, Google meets lease, a Zoom, and the N H S L I C enrichment program, that's the advisory program. And then, um, as part of assessments, next year, we're going to utilize our, uh, grant for the P S A Ts for grade 10, um, which will also be another assessment, um, for the sophomore class. The next, um, oop, I'm sorry, I thought I pulled that out. That's all the, I'm sorry, instructional technology, um, as what I just went through. The lease for the Chromebook, sixth grade, Breslin Hand, middle school, and tech software. S A grant summary, so this is supplies and materials, um, and we allocated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for dividers, P P E awnings, um, dividers also for lunch tables. Um, so we, this, um, would be part of our building and grounds and also as we move into next school year, um, and really just focused on the school supplies. Our assessment, testing, and development, uh, it's a one-year. Um, and these are all the different apps that would give us, uh, real, real-time and real-world assessments, uh, for our students. And then our storage containers and, uh, where we had to move all the furniture out, uh, of the building, we would need some more containers if, you know, depending on, uh, what we need to do for furniture and furniture storage or taking the furniture out. Our S A two summary, as you can see, there's stipends and salaries, instructional technology and supplies and materials. So for next year, um, that's five hundred thousand, oop. Take a break. I, I am getting my steps in, so that's good. My fifth hit on. Um, supplies and materials, and then S R two remaining funds for year two. Um, we wanted to hold on to this, so this would be, um, as we're coming back into the school next year, um, you know, different areas that we have funding if we need to all of a sudden, you know, purchase, uh, more items or add more, uh, staffing in the sense for, um, you know, either enrichment or, um, intervention. This would also allocate for year two summer school, if we need summer school programming, uh, for learning loss. So as we, um, take a look at the central office, uh, needs and kind of a redesign, I just want to credit, uh, Assistant Superintendent Beck and Liz Kinsley, uh, for all of their work in the STEM areas for, uh, pre-K to grade eight. Um, they've done an amazing job, and I think our district is in extremely great shape, uh, regarding STEM, uh, overall, uh, STEM. So for the Director of Communications and Instructional Technology, we've kind of restructured, uh, an existing position, that existing position, where we increase, um, the salary, um, to make this a district-wide position, a K to, uh, pre-K to 12, uh, Director of Communication Instructional Technology. So that is one restructuring of, uh, allocated, uh, resources that, that we already have. Um, our next, uh, piece that we've been looking at, I think, as a district, uh, and Emily Russen has done a tremendous job, um, but we looking with Emily to continue her work at a pre-K to five level. And then we'd like to bring in a literacy coordinator for the upper grades, um, similar, uh, with secondary literacy focus for grade six to 12. Um, and that would be the increase there. And then our behavioral health coordinator, uh, we utilized approximately fifty thousand dollars, uh, via the S A grant to have someone coordinate plan and to work on the behavioral health focus. And then part of the E, uh, L E A, we would be, uh, asking for an additional fifty thousand, uh, for that. Uh, restructuring, um, our central office, uh, and as we've been through the pandemic, we under, fully understand, um, of an increase. So we're really looking at restructuring our personnel in central office. And by having a payroll clerk that would just focus on payroll, that would allow us, uh, to work and develop a human resource administrative, uh, assistant focus, um, where we can work on, uh, human resources and personnel, uh, in that sense. Um, so that's our increases there. I did send, uh, the draft of, um, many of these job descriptions to school committee. We haven't posted or advertised a move forward, uh, on positions until we continue with our budget process. As we're looking at, um, optimizing organ, organizational design operations, um, here are the staffing, preliminary staffing updates. And I apologize, I think on the, um, information that we sent out, we did have a typo. It was a grade two teacher who was actually a grade three. Um, and that's enrollment numbers currently as grade two moves to grade through three. With the staffing, we have those classroom sizes would be twenty-three and above, um, which, uh, for us is too high. I mean, we, we feel would be too high, um, and it would, it would fit outside the numbers of our small classes or manageable classes. Um, so a grade three teacher, uh, by the Breslin Hand administration has been recommended. Our technology integration at the, um, elementary school, we feel is, uh, an important, um, I guess, uh, addition because of how important technology has been since March. Uh, so that would be an increase there. Um, and then a language-based special education program support, um, with an I A. At the Mullen, uh, preliminary budget requests, uh, interventionist, potential student learning loss, um, a language-based teacher that's, uh, built into the special education program development, as I was talking about, um, developing programming, uh, within the school system. And then also an instructional assistant, uh, to support the, um, language-based program. As we look at the, uh, middle school and the high school, uh, back to the strategic plan and the building of our world language program, we would add, uh, two additional world language teachers, uh, added to the grade sixteen. Uh, point six reading teacher, uh, reading support, and also would provide, uh, support in the special education department. And then also language-based I As, um, built into the special education department and supporting our program. At the high school, the preliminary budget requests, our T L C teacher, um, that we didn't, we have not filled that, um, we may postpone that and fill it next year. Um, just because we've been in the, um, you know, the hybrid model. Um, but so we're still looking at that, that, that position. But at this time, we would move that into, uh, next year's budget. As part of a lot of the work, as part of the strategic plan in the college and career readiness and our pathways program, we would look to develop in, um, our career in college. So that's, this is, uh, in the future with a internship program along with, uh, having a counselor just geared towards college and career pathways, uh, at the high school, um, which ties in, I think, to the vision for us as, um, a global education and making sure that our students leave Newbury Port High School prepared for both college and career readiness. Um, a point five, this is the work of, uh, Nancy Koch and also, uh, Deb O'Connor, uh, to manage, uh, grade eight caseload. And then also to have, um, uh, point five, working with our families, uh, out of district and continually having those conversations, uh, with families in an attempt, um, to continue to communicate with the attempt to, uh, have them come back to the district. So we felt a more personal touch, uh, number one, the person will be doing all the caseloads for grade eight, but also having part of that job description of working with our out-of-district, uh, students and families. Uh, Mr. Wolf and administration team also looking at learning loss. So a point two math intervention and a point one, uh, increase in reading intervention for the high school students. Our summary and, uh, of the working budget, so you can see the preliminary budget, item there, thirty-eight million one hundred and seventy-four hundred and three dollars. Percentage increase-decrease, uh, six point eight seven. As you can see from, you know, we still do the budget, so that I think what was, out of bound was a little bit higher, uh, we continually to revise the budget. So that number went down to six point eight seven. Uh, preliminary revenue is an increase of about two point nine, and the estimated shortfall, uh, is a three point, uh, eight percent. Um, our S A grant, we've actually talked about, and then also our total preliminary budget. So this is our revenue, uh, generated revenue. So the city appropriation, as Mayor Holliday said, uh, this is just the starting point for, for all of us. Um, is there a three point one, our Medicaid, um, our choice, uh, school choice, the fund balances, the choice balance. Um, we would like to try to maintain, as I said, uh, around a five hundred thousand dollar, um, school choice and not spend that down because that's our only emergency fund for the district. Circuit breaker, um, is right now, um, this is where we're at. We haven't got our numbers for this year, and Nancy's done a great job because she utilizes circuit breaker funding from last year to this year for this budget. So the circuit breaker, uh, breakdown and reimbursement would be going into the following budget year. A Title One Athletic Revolving Transportation in Swayze. But you can see all of the revenue and the general, uh, where we generate revenue from, you know, for the district. So the total revenue, um, that we're anticipating is a two point nine eight increase, uh, for us. And on this table, I know Nancy, when we have the finalized budget and the line items, um, we just want to, also, we talk about revenue, and we just want to thank the N E F. Uh, they've been obviously a great supporter, uh, of the district. And they're not on this official, uh, sheet, uh, because it's not part of, uh, the fully operational budget. But we also include them, uh, and thank them for all of their support. Um, they've just been awesome. So our preliminary expenses, um, as you can see, uh, we broke this down, uh, by school, uh, system-wide, and then you, you have your totals on the bottom. So our total increase is a six point eight seven, uh, increase, uh, district-wide. So here's the state funding sources not yet determined, okay? So chapter 70 formula has not been determined. So, uh, for Newbury Port, um, you know, it's something that if we receive additional funding, it's beneficial, um, but it's nothing, as we build our budget, that we're really, um, banking on, you know, a million dollars coming into the district through chapter 70. It's usually, although it's additional money, it's usually minimal, uh, money for our budget. The circuit breaker, uh, reimbursement percentage, uh, we usually, Nancy does a great job by budgeting that low as we develop our budget. So we usually commit around to seventy percent as we start off. But, you know, depending on what the state's going to do for circuit breaker, sometimes they're, they're, uh, you know, seventy percent to seventy-two or seventy-three percent. Um, so if that goes higher than the seventy, that would be a little bump, uh, for our special education costs, which will be, uh, helpful. Uh, but we haven't received the breakdown of that at this time by the state. Our second stimulus package, as you all know, when we've been, uh, watching the news, there is a one point nine trillion, uh, dollar stimulus package, um, that we anticipate, uh, to be signed, uh, on Friday or Saturday. Um, and then that, we anticipate, uh, additional possible funding coming into the city and also the schools. So there are some funding sources that we don't have accurate numbers on, um, that, you know, we, we may be receiving additional funding, uh, down the line. So that would also be helpful, um, for our budget. And then just our next steps here, um, as we do the budget outline. Um, so right now, this is our preliminary budget overview in February. Um, so from tonight's, uh, presentation, over the next few weeks, we'll be working with our budget holders and developing a finality list. And I believe, uh, not the March first school committee, uh, but the, uh, March, I think fifteenth school committee, meaning we will have the prioritized, uh, budget, um, with the different tiers of all the different asks, um, for the school committee. So, um, that's our goal, but we will continue our budget deliberations, um, on the upcoming weeks. And then in April, we'll do the public presentation of the school budget and then, uh, submit the budget and, uh, to the school committee for approval in April. And then in May, um, have the final budget appear in front of the city council. So that's, that's kind of where we're at for our overall budget. I think, as I said, we're addressing, I think, those four needs, the social emotional health of our students. We're addressing, uh, the potential learning loss for our students. We've really utilized, I think, since I've been here, the strategic plan and a lot of the work that we've been doing. Um, and, um, I think, uh, instructional technology and communication aspect is also, uh, tied, uh, to the strategic plan. And then also, um, you know, lessons learned as, as we move through the year with COVID and the pandemic. So, there we go. And that's it.
Excellent. Thanks, Sean. Uh, anybody have any questions about the preliminary budget asks? Ms. Holliday?
Thank you, Sean. Thank you so much. I really, um, appreciate the overview and I really appreciate the. And I really appreciate the fact that, you know, we're starting from high level with what each of the schools have determined that they need. I think one thing that could be helpful is to separate out the percentage of what you're depending on in terms of ESRS two funding or, you know, looking to the city for some CARES Act. Because again, let's hope this, you know, big stimulus package gets funded. They're talking the end of this week, and you know, they're talking about, you know, a significant amount of money coming to the state and then into municipalities based on that. But if there was a way that you could separate out the percentages of what you're using in terms of the ESRS grant versus, you know, traditional revenue to fund the budget, I think would be really helpful to see. And then I just, I worry about some of the positions that are funded through ESRS. Granted, it's a two-year, and we have to do what we can to build additional supports, which I really like the fact that first and foremost, you're looking at, you know, what they're referring as the pandemic slide and putting in additional supports, interventionist curriculum, technology integrators, et cetera, et cetera. But are you anticipating continuing those positions as we go forward? I know some of them you identified or some of the costs, particularly for technology, one year, one year, two year, two year. So I'm a little concerned about funding positions and then not having additional funding support to continue those going forward. So I think it would be helpful to kind of try to differentiate those in the presentation of the budget. But and then are you looking at Chapter Seventy in the city allocation? It's not in the revenue. So where are you putting that?
The Chapter Seventy, I think we're, Nancy, we're putting that usually through.
This revenue sheet you presented, I don't see it anywhere. That's all I was asking.
I've never budgeted Chapter Seventy.
Really? You just include, you included in the city appropriation?
Exactly.
Okay, I just wanted to check to be sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Anybody else got some questions?
I'll go, I guess. Anyone else want to go? Sean, so it looks like those positions, though, aren't aren't ESSA-funded anyways, right? Those are just, some are just, you know, reorganization of of current positions, right?
Yes, a lot of those, a lot of the positions, I think we were, I think we're being calculated in the sense of, I mean, we fully understand, so a lot of those positions are part of the LEA, the, our operational budget and not depending on the ESSR grant. So I think as we're moving forward, some of those intervention specialists that we have, I think it's something that we we added into the ESSR grant with the anticipation that they may not be needed in the next couple of years. But we also, as we build the budget going into next year, it gives us some flexibility if we need to roll them over into the LEA, the the regular operational budget.
Does this take into account, I know you've got some interventionists, you know, stipends and positions, but as far as, you know, I mean, we might have a huge jump come the fall in in special ed identification or kids that qualify for Title One or, you know, support like that. Do we have it built in here under curriculum for, you know, we might need to have an intervention program, a targeted intervention program, not just staff, but an actual program that kids work with? I don't, I don't know of any off the top of my head that that the district currently uses, but but that might be an area that that would be a significant cost if that was a direction that we had to go in.
Right. I want to, I think when we're looking, I know Nancy Koch is on on the line, but I just want to credit Nancy Koch, Deb O'Connor, and our whole special education team for, and also, I think we're monitoring and working and identifying individuals right now, you know, with regarding special education criteria. So I don't foresee if we're in the fall of next year, all of a sudden we have a slew of kids that we haven't identified yet. I mean, there may be typical, you know, as we're up and running, but I don't, I don't see it as as a major, going to be a major issue in the future. The the other benefit too is the work that's already going on with a language-based program development. I think is also, it's not like we're waiting for next year. There's a lot of work going on right now, which identifying students with reading disabilities and disabilities with language disabilities too. So, but no, I think it's something that, I think we're, we've, as you said, I think earlier, regarding assessment and internal assessments and monitoring learning loss. I think our teachers have done a nice job in identifying potential students and and learning loss too, so.
Yeah, and and that might fall into ESSR too. I just, you know, it might be, and it might not have to be kids getting identified. It might just be, you know, you know, learning loss and gaps that we're trying to make up. So I mean, it might, it might take a program to do that. I just, I just, I just wanted, wanted, I was curious if, you know, again, it might benefit, it might be a way to benefit the the greatest number of kids, you know, to get them back up to speed. Because there's, I know there's a lot of research-based programs out there. So I have one more question. So when I look at this, I again, you know, I think I heard the collective gasp in the community when there was, it said three point one year for projected. But is that, you know, again, that would be a lot higher if if we weren't allocating so much through the ESSR grants, right? Is that, is that the way I should read that? Because some of those things, even though we're paying it through the ESSR grant, you know, things like Chromebooks and things like that, those would still be in our budget if that was the direction that we were going in, you know, previously.
Correct.
I think.
Can I just jump in here, Sean? This is, this is the number that when we did the joint meeting of the school committee and the city council, where Ethan does, our finance director does the projections out for the year. And this is what we consider the starting point. That's all.
Yeah, I know, I know. Thank you.
You know, I know a lot of people did the same gasp type of thing. Can someone explain again, why is Chapter Seventy under city if it's money directly from the state that we lose half of once we get it? Why is included in city appropriation, just in general?
Because it comes in on our cherry sheet, which is a breakdown of all of the funding that comes directly to the city. And then in turn, it's allocated to the schools.
But so really, the city allocation is roughly two million dollars less than that number.
Depends on what the Chapter Seventy is.
Want to look at it, right?
But roughly, yeah.
And I, and I appreciate that the three point one or whatever that three percent-ish number is that, you know, there's always a start, and I I get it. But the contract is three percent. So we already know that we can't not go at least three percent before we do anything, right? I just want to make sure that that's clear, you know, the the three point one is a start, but it's kind of a finish, really. It's really point one percent extra stuff. And this, these are great ideas, Superintendent. I definitely appreciate it. So your your wish list, if you want to call it that, is roughly seven percent.
Correct.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for the superintendent?
I have a couple of questions, but I want other people to to talk first. I'll go in at the end.
I sent you guys a bunch of questions that I got some answers to that I'll have to read through. I mean, we're going to go through this again, but just some things that popped up while you were talking that I wanted to ask about. You allocated money for the next year's sophomores to take the PSAT?
Correct.
Is that something that our sophomores usually do through the school?
No, this was, this is, it's twofold. This is part of college and career readiness. It's a, it's a nice tool to assess the sophomore class. So we felt, you know, I think eventually we're going to roll this into the operational budget. But right now, when we're looking at assessment data, the PSATs, this would be, I think, a good opportunity for us to utilize, to test all students, all 10th graders. Many districts already do that with the PSATs. So this, this is our first opportunity to do that.
I guess that's what I was asking, like, I know that's that's done in other places already. So we we have not historically done that yet.
Correct.
The next year might be a first time moving forward that we're going to do the PSATs.
On a regular basis.
So this year, that's, so my next question was obviously going to be, are we also funding the juniors, the rising juniors who are currently sophomores? Are we going to do it, do the PSATs for them? But if it's not something we're usually offer, then probably not.
I think for, I think right now, we're just focusing on the sophomore class for the PSATs. But that's, that's a discussion I think we can hold, you know what I'm saying, in the future.
Can we post your new positions as in, I know you're waiting for the budget to get approved, but can we post them as anticipated so that people know as we're going into the hiring season for positions of that ilk? They know that we're, we're looking and hoping?
Yes, I think, so right now, we're working on two positions. We're working on the business manager position and then also an assistant superintendent position. And I think once we we have those individuals hired, then we'll, we'll be posting, I think shortly, those new positions, because we would like to have, you know, obviously our current people, but also the new people sitting in on some of these other district positions. I think their their input with the new team would also be important.
Maybe for, I don't know if it needs to happen for Monday, because we're meeting again March first, but maybe at some point in the near future, can we see like an org chart?
Absolutely.
Especially because I know like we have the teacher leader positions now within the buildings, and it would just be interesting to see how everything, including the interventionists and the curriculum people all fit together.
It's a good idea.
So that, we're actually working on that for the March fifteenth, but you will have that organizational chart. And and once we've, we've actually developed that and and it's, we're really excited because I just think, I think we have phenomenal teachers and phenomenal staff. And I think by having some oversight and some direction, we can really consolidate and and bring everyone together and just really have a system-wide approach to a lot of the work that we're doing. So I'm really excited about that. But yes, absolutely, we'll have that organizational chart for the March fifteenth.
Last, last question, can you at some point get for us numbers of the students in each grade level? Because the numbers on on the DESI report card.
Yep.
Don't list any sort of a bubble class K through five. And so, you know, you're talking about increased numbers in one grade versus versus another. The state, the state document does not show that at all. In fact, what they show is a general decrease in numbers. If you started at the Mullen and went down to first grade, that that there are fewer and fewer kids in each grade. So if we could, if we could just see what the trends look like.
Absolutely.
Especially because, like, we all know that in the in the middle school and the high school, there are some grades now with, you know, classes still in the upper hundreds, even low two hundreds. And so at some points, I don't remember us letting go teachers. So at some point, we either had much more crowded classes, which I don't remember in the last five or six years, or we're going to have exceptionally small classes. But if you could just try to marry the numbers that you you see in the classrooms versus what DESI has reported, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, we all set? Anybody have any more questions for Sean?
I have another question if nobody else does.
Bruce, did you have a question? Okay, all right, Sean.
And Sean, we don't have to do this right now, but just something to maybe get on the radar. It's been a long time since we had that foreign language presentation. I mean, it was wonderful when we had it, when we had the consultant come in, I think from Salem State, and talked about, you know, the work she was doing with you around kind of building back up that world language team. So when I see two, two more teachers were trying to add a grade six, so I guess it's the same model of seven and eight, have them be core teachers in there. If the goal is to still have those kids finish middle school and hopefully test into Spanish two instead of Spanish one, it might just be good to hear what adding grade six does to that. Does that change how we teach sixth, seventh, and eighth? Or is it just added to, like, what's the curriculum look like, I guess? You know, I I know a lot of programs are sold differently and presented differently. I don't know what we'd be using for that, but I guess how does it, how does the seventh, eighth plan turn into a six, eight plan with the hopes to getting kids going right into Spanish two into high school? Again, you don't have to answer that right now, but maybe that's a, you know, maybe we can add more of a narrative to some of these priorities, you know, by that that next meeting.
Absolutely.
I would double on that, especially because we already, we've accomplished the goal of getting kids into Spanish two, starting high school in Spanish two. So, you know, at some point, we were also going to look at other parts of programming, like, you know, the arts, for example, was something we had talked about and seen to grow other things. So, and like, I know that world language has been on the on the plate for a long time, but, you know, if we had to list things that are aspirations versus, you know, things that are still in need of more basic growing.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you, Superintendent. And continuing, oh, Steve, you got a question there? No, all right, you're muted. Okay, sorry. Continuing the Sean Gallagher Show, the superintendent's report.
Oh, I have to put my glasses back on. All right. Yeah, and and as, I agree, and I think this is as, this is our preliminary budget overview. And I think the more and more we continue with our budget presentations, there'll be a lot more specifics. And I know we have on the docket for March first is our building principals are going to highlight their school improvement plans and kind of where they're at with those in their goals. And then also explain how that also assisted with them in their budget development. So some of those questions that you've asked tonight, I can have some of the principals address next week. All right. I got all my notes and papers all around. So I think the the other piece that we have is NFORCE nine one one. If you all recall, before COVID, I think it was in February before the pandemic, we did a presentation, or we talked about NFORCE nine one one, and it's really an emergency. Basically, it it's a way of cutting down on delay if there's an emergency within the building. It's an app that would be on every device and also on phones. And it reduces emergency response time in connection from a two-minute to a four-minute average to twelve seconds. So staff member would have the ability to send an alert to the police. And what what happens on their end is it immediately goes to dispatch. And wherever that alert is sent, it's pinged. So the the police and emergency personnel know exactly where the alert is. And dispatch then opens up communication with the person. And then it's live, it's really like live intel that's going on. So we saw this as a great opportunity under school safety and emergency, not only the emergency response, but it's also a way of everyone in communication really live with any type of an emergency situation. So we worked with the company last year, but we never got it up and running because the pandemic hit. And then we have brought them in and have had the discussion. So in the next few weeks, we're going to do some professional development with the staff and really go over NFORCE nine one one. And it's just, it can be utilized for for many. If there's a medical emergency, if there's a threat within a school, all of the the safety protocols and emergency personnel would be alerted and in contact. And then it's also a reverse nine one one where if there was, you know, weather advisory, if there was a tornado watch, if if there was something going on, a police chase, that the police could also send a signal to us to be in a secure room or anything like that. So we did talk about this last year. People were very excited about this, but we postponed it. And now as we're, we're moving into the spring, we're going to work with the company. So that's, that's kind of a good update with that. Anybody, any questions on it? You all remember that. That's the twelve seconds and the response. And and the other piece that's really nice. And the other piece that's really nice is for the police emergency personnel, they'll get all the schematics. Steve Burcom sent them the schematics and the maps of all of the schools. So if there's an emergency and room three oh four at the high school, the police would have live intel and then they would also be able to go right to that room in emergency where the emergency is. So that's also, I think, a great benefit for our emergency personnel in the police department. And the marshal's been awesome and on board with working with the schools ever since I've been here, so. The the next piece, I just want to, once again, thank Lynn Cody, Tom Abrams.
Sorry, Buck.
Hey, Sean, I think I'm going to shut the lights off in my house just to be in solidarity with you.
Definitely a green school district.
That we are a green school district, right? What Lynn Cody and Tom Abrams for the community dialogue around Just Mercy, also Essential Partners, but also the high school staff and some of the students led a lot of the breakout room discussions. It was a great way of getting to personally know a lot of our community members that I haven't met. And we got to share some personal stories. But also it provided, I think, an opportunity for constructive dialogue and safe dialogue around some, you know, it could be hard topics around racism and systemic racism. And and I was just really thrilled and I was honored to just be part of that. It was, I tell you, it was just a great opportunity for our community. And I know there is going to be more of that community read and discussion on the Just Mercy book. And last but not least, the commissioner's update, we've already talked about MCAS testing throughout the meeting tonight. And then also, as I said, he scheduled an additional conference call with superintendents on Thursday. And we'll be kind of listening to to what, you know, what what his thought processes on on more in person learning in some of the guidelines. So that's my brief superintendent's report. And that's it.
Excellent. Thank you. Does anybody have any new business? Mayor Holliday?
Just real quickly, I wanted to add to what the superintendent was talking about in terms of of vaccines. I had an exchange with Governor Baker on last Friday and then with Lieutenant Governor on Sunday. And there was some confusion about whether or not a regional vaccination site could be set up in our area. And they're very supportive of it. We met with nine other health directors today in a Zoom meeting and Amesbury is going to take the lead. I did talk to the superintendent about the possibility of using the knock gym one day or schools after hours. So we're working with these communities to roll out and have a plan sent to DPH by next week. I also wanted to let the community know that anyone, like teacher, anybody who wants to volunteer at one of these clinics gets the vaccine. So just keep that in mind, any of you who might be interested in, and you have to work at least four of the clinics in order to get the double dose. So but I'm hoping to have additional information by the end of next week about our sending a comprehensive plan to DPH and hopefully that will be approved. And then that, once we get through quickly, the sixty five and we move down our, you know, we all talked about today, our goal is we want to vaccinate teachers because we want kids back. So I think there's consensus from all the area, you know, leaders and managers, mayors and Department of Health folks that we're all in agreement that that's, you know, really the next step that we really, really want to quickly do that. So I'm kind of looking at two tiers, one that could Talda may be able to come through for us. But if not, then we should have this additional regional vaccination site set up hopefully in the next couple of weeks and be approved, because we already have assurances from the administration that that they're supportive of this region setting this up. And I just wanted to share that.
Well, that's great news. Anybody else with new business? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
I moved.
Second.
We have to have a roll call for the journeying too, Mayor?
Yes, unfortunately, it's a vote.
Last time, Ms. Kennedy.
All right, Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mayor Holliday?
Yes.
Mr. Menon?
I'd like to stick around a little longer, but yes, yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkeizer?
Yes.
Ms. Spalding?
Yes.
And Sean Ridden, please.
Yes.
Excellent. All right, everybody have a good night. Thank you. And we will see you on Monday.
All right. Thank you.